How we get it, where we get it from as a major source of air pollution, as much of that is diesel goods movement. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment on any non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to our next item. Conflict of interest issues will be dealt with, with specific items. Item number two, we have a proclamation declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Is there someone here to receive the proclamation?
My name is Clark Morrow. I'm with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, and I am here to accept the proclamation on behalf of Children's Network of the San Bernardino County with whom I work, and on behalf of the Sheriff's Department for whom I work. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. An invitation was sent out to all 24 cities in the county asking them to make this proclamation, and Loma Linda stepped up to the plate and is doing so, for which we're very thankful and grateful. And I would like to invite everyone to attend the Shine a Light on Child Abuse Breakfast, the annual, 13th Annual Breakfast that's going to be held at the National Orange Show on the morning of March 31st. And to get more information about that, you can simply go to the county website and look for the Children's Network page, and it'll give you all the information you need there. I also have some child abuse prevention blue ribbon pins for everyone here.
Okay, thank you. The proclamation has the usual wheretases, and it refers to recognition of the right of all children to receive care, protection, guidance that a family provides, and the right to be free from harm. And it mentions that there were in 2010 nearly 37,000 referrals for suspected child abuse and neglect in San Bernardino County alone. So it's a very large problem, and we proudly declare April as Child Abuse Prevention Month for the City of Loma Linda, and we thank you for your involvement in preventing child abuse.
Thank you very much. I'll leave these with the Secretary.
It's a joint meeting of the City Council and the RDA, and Special Counsel, please.
Good evening. The instruments in front of you, both in your capacity as the governing board of the agency and as the City Council, are resolutions approving a cooperative agreement, resolutions by each of the agency and the city, and a cooperation agreement. What these instruments basically do is the cooperation agreement sets forth the agency's current indebtedness to the city and certain activities or projects the agency may undertake in the future, or the city may undertake on behalf of the agency and for which the agency would become indebted to the city. Those amounts are currently fixed in the agreement, and I'll comment on that further in a minute. As far as the cooperation agreement, the cooperation agreement, and I borrowed something from the clerk's office, has a repayment schedule, and it also, because there is not a capacity of the agency to repay the city at this time, would provide for deeds of trust to be recorded against several properties that the agency owns, securing the obligation of the agency to repay the city. Another item I have discussed with manager is the possibility of the agency conveying to the city two properties, one generally known as 80 Acres, that is abutting Redlands Boulevard west of California, and another property known as Richardson and Redlands. And as to these properties, these would be conveyed in partial satisfaction of the existing indebtedness of the agency to the city. So I have prepared a version of the cooperation agreement that has those things in mind. So let me tell you the motions I would be recommending, if it's the pleasure of the Board and the City Council. With regard to the cooperative agreement, the motion should be, I believe, to approve and instruct the Finance Director to transfer tax-exempt bond proceeds held by the agency to the city administratively, which the city would hold in a segregated account and expand consistent with the original indenture, and consistent with federal tax law rules. Secondly, as part of the motion, the Finance Director would be requested to report back concerning the state of the agency's indebtedness to the city based on any adjustment, should you, for example, approve the conveyance of the 80 Acres and the Redlands-Richardson properties. The numbers that she has prepared would probably need to be updated to reflect that, and she could do that by a memorandum at a later meeting. With regard to the cooperation agreement, the motion would be to approve as presented, and that includes the deeds of trust. It would be a deed as to the 80 Acres and the Redlands and Richardson's properties, with the Finance Director to report back at a later meeting concerning the value of the property conveyed. The concept being the property will be conveyed at fair market value, and although I believe Mr. Bolowich has an estimate of what that is, that could be further vetted, and that could be brought back at a later time, the amount of the agency indebtedness is substantial enough, based on what, on staff's analysis, that the conveyances would still leave millions of dollars of agency indebtedness on the books to the city.
The changes to the bills in front of us, are those amendments that you would want us to add to the existing bills?
I have prepared language in the cooperation agreement that provides for the conveyance of certain properties. I don't have the legal description, so I have merely a placeholder for conveyance property that staff would fill in, which my understanding from my discussion with the manager would be the so-called 80 Acres and the Redlands and Richardson properties.
So what we're looking at is there's a council bill for the cooperative agreement, redevelopment agency bill for the cooperative agreement, and respective bills for the cooperation agreement, and they are as described by Special Counsel, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any questions about what he said? Any questions of staff, or is there someone who would like to make motion on 3A and 3C, which I will take, and then the Chair of the Redevelopment Agency would take B and D?
I will move Council Bill R-2011-07 and 08 with the specific language as indicated by our special legal counsel that was just elucidated.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Is that enough clarification as to our motion to make clear?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Is there any opposition? Seeing none, that's approved. Mr. Chairman?
Do I hear a motion for redevelopment agency bill R-201102?
So moved, and I would like to add 2011-03 to that motion.
We'll do it together.
Yes.
And I'll second those motions also.
We have a motion by Mayor Rixby and Councilman Dooper. Seeing no opposition, Council Bill R-201102 and Council Bill, I mean, RDA Bill R-201103, so approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have before us the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and move.
Okay.
And I'll second it all.
Is there any discussion of that? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's passed. We'll move to item number seven, Council Bill O-2011-04, extending the time limits for the original project area. Madam Secretary.
This item was before you at the last meeting, and Special Counsel did address the issue. This would extend the time limits on the original project only, without any of the amendments, and eliminating any extension to Project Area Two. At the last meeting, you did introduce the ordinance, and so at this meeting, we would do the second reading, and you would adopt on a roll call vote. This would extend the time to repay indebtedness.
I'll go ahead and have her ready to move.
I think we need to, the appropriate motion would be to instruct to waive reading in full and by title only, and call for a vote. So, is that your motion?
I make a motion to waive reading and read by title only, and proceed with a roll call vote on Council Bill 0-211-04.
I will second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, then Madam, Madam Secretary, proceed.
It is entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Loma Linda, California: Amending the Redevelopment Plan for the Loma Linda Community Project as Authorized by Senate Bill 1096 pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 33333.6 (E2) and D2 as to the original area." And you may vote. And it passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business, number eight, Council Bill R-2011-06, Extending the Auto Center to Richardson Street. Mr. Bolowich.
We're proposing to extend the existing Auto Center boundaries, which currently end at the Quaid Harley-Davidson property, all the way to the east to Richardson Street to encompass everything between Redlands Boulevard and Interstate 10. That would include the vacant land there, the truck repair area, the old hotel, and then the redevelopment-owned property at Richardson and Redlands. The purpose of this is that we have interest from a used car dealer to take over the old business site that was the medical supply house and sell used cars there. Expanding that will increase the, obviously, the sales tax revenue from that. It also will allow the truck repair facility to extend into selling tires and possibly vehicles as well, and will bring ancillary hospitality services, restaurants, or shopping into that auto center that support those functions.
Okay, are there any questions? Go ahead.
When you say that we're going to extend the auto center, how many acres are we talking about? Roughly?
Roughly about 45 acres.
And how much of that acreage will be used with the car dealership if they come in?
About five acres.
And when we say we're extending the auto center, how much flexibility is there in terms of how the remaining property is used?
It's available for specifically new and used auto sales, and then additional ancillary services, so other commercial that would support that, hotel, restaurant, stores, retail, anything that would fall into that. We probably couldn't use it for medical offices or office building type use, but it's primarily a commercial retail space, and it's not written as exclusive to auto sales only. It's the area that allows auto sales and everything else.
Okay, so it's basically, we call it auto center, but it's commercial property for development?
It's the commercial space that allows auto sales.
Okay.
So it's permissive and not restrictive?
And help me recall, how close is that to the, I think, the, in the auto center, that the business that's the furthest east is currently the Harley-Davidson shop, right?
Correct.
How near is this to that, or will it abut the Harley-Davidson, or is it further east?
It will, it will abut Harley-Davidson on the southeast section of their property.
Okay.
Along Redlands Boulevard.
Yes, yes, okay.
So it will be contiguous auto sales, rather than auto sales, vacant space auto sales.
Yeah, okay, that's, that was my question. And I'm assuming that, I mean, there are used auto dealers that look good, and there are used auto dealers that don't look good. I assume that we've got some influence through the building codes and so forth to ensure that this is going to be a quality place, at least in terms of the aesthetic appearance.
We have influence via building codes and code enforcement, and this is Nader's Used Auto Sale, they're on Redlands Boulevard, just the other side of Alabama. They're an existing facility. It's a fairly clean operation. There's not, you know, I know what you mean, some used auto places have oil filters laying around and trash, and that's not, that's not the case there.
And are they moving from their Redlands location, or would this be a second?
They will be moving from that Redlands location.
And they last month sold 47 vehicles, so this is not a small-time operation.
Is it related to the other Naders?
Same guy, he wants his operation across the street from his store.
Couple of comments. I fully support the idea of expanding the auto center. It's been a key element of our financial well-being as a city, and I think anything we can do to bolster it makes good sense, so highly support it. I do think the issue of the used car sale is important to address. For the first about 20 years of our auto center, we restricted any standalone used car operations. That changed back a number of years ago, and I have yet to hear any serious concerns or detriment that's come because of that, and I think it is a very valid point, but I think we've had a good track record since we changed that to show that it can be done in a very well-run and non-dileterious manner, so I think that's really important, that we, we do recognize that and go forward with the same standards that we've had to make that a success, so thank you.
To second that, we're very fortunate with the dealers that we have in there now. They're quality professional operations, the used cards, pieces that they carry, they maintain the sites well, and we're very happy with them. It's nice to move somebody in. I guess the concept, if you move somebody into a nice neighborhood, they'll keep it nice, and that's, that's kind of what we're looking at with that.
Any other questions or comments?
I will go ahead and move Council Bill R-2011-06, Extending the Auto Center to Richardson Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, then that passes. Are there any reports of councilmen?
I just want to take a quick moment to just emphasize, as usual, given the fact that we're still in a somewhat contracted economy, it's really important that we try to encourage our citizens to try to spend their money here in Loma Linda. And just to give you a little bit of perspective, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jar, but last quarter, our sales tax increased by about 15%?
It's the third quarter.
Third quarter?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm not sure how that's reflective with the county or the state, but that's pretty impressive, and I think that, what a lot of folks sometimes don't realize is that it's not just the residents that spend money here, but it's all the visitors who come in here and work here. And to give you a little bit of perspective of how much buying power there is here, many of you have heard me talk about trying to encourage people to go buy Apple products at the campus store. Well, to give you a little bit of perspective, that particular portion of the store three and a half years ago was doing about a little under $100,000 a year. The first three months of this year has done over half a million dollars, and that's just reflective of the fact that residents can spend a lot of money, or visitors here in Loma Linda, so not only should you try to spend your money here, but encourage those who you work with to spend their money here as well. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, they will have the latest iPad 2, which is available March 11th. You won't be able to pick it up on March 11th, but don't go to Target, don't go to Ratchikamanga, stay here and buy in Loma Linda, and help support our businesses and our tax dollars. Thank you.
Just want to mention that I sit now on the California League of Cities Inland Empire Board, and last week, Councilman Pesco and I attended a dinner put on by the League of Cities, in which our State Senator, Minority Leader, Bob Dutton, gave a speech, talked a little bit about the budget, the state budget, and the issues, and it was actually pretty interesting, because he explained that, at least by his, his understanding, a lot of the proposed budget cuts by the government, or by the governor are not really budget cuts at all, but they're moving monies from other areas, and in fact, they have not cut their budget at all. They still plan to go ahead with almost all their projects at the same level, except taking monies from, from other organizations and other places that they probably shouldn't. It was an interesting, interesting meeting, and I think we got something out of it, but as, as citizens of California, we need to really pay attention to what's going on here. In reading between the lines, there's a lot of things going on between the RDAs and the cities, and some of that stuff we addressed tonight, but a lot of issues, so pay attention out there.
Any other comments by councilman? I'd like to add to Ovi's encouragement to spend your money in Loma Linda. We've got great restaurants in Loma Linda, many different ethnic restaurants and others. Try to eat close to home. If you can't eat at home, eat in a Loma Linda restaurant. It's not just an iPad city. Okay, are there any reports of officers? Okay, I will turn the microphone over to the redevelopment agency, and after that, we will proceed to a workshop, and our adjournment will follow that.
Thank you. I think, I guess we'll just go through the agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
This gives opportunity for the public to comment on any item that's not on the RDA agenda. This is the time to come and speak your piece. Hearing none. We've already dispensed with item number two when we had a joint meeting. The only item that's left is item number three, which is the minutes of the-
I move the minutes of February 22.
I hear first and second. Hearing no opposition, so passes, and our RDA is adjourned within less than a minute. Thanks.
Good job. I can't match it. Okay, we will proceed to our agendized workshop. I believe we have conflict of interest issues to dispense with. I have a conflict with, due to my employment, with Loma Linda faculty, physicians, and surgeons.
Everyone already knows we're all somewhat employed by the university or the medical center.
I've elucidated my reasons for conflict previously, and won't say anymore.
Under the rule of necessity, we've previously practiced that. I have my notorious swizzle sticks, and two of them are marked in "Vote," and the winners will participate and vote on this item, and we will carry that forward to any future meetings as well. Congratulations.
Should I take your seat?
We have a presentation from Dr. Hart, who would like to go over the proposed Stewart Street project that's between Anderson and Campus. Dr. Hart?
I'm Dick Hart from Normal University. First, I want to thank the City Council for commemorating and recognizing the year I graduated from Loma Linda in your seal. I appreciate that. 1970 was a great year. This is old business, really, and I'm kind of the designated driver tonight, so let me kind of walk you through this. The Centennial Complex has been open for about a year and a half now, and we knew when we opened it that we needed to do something more with the traffic down through there. We've put in the light, and that has helped to a limited degree. Unfortunately, it still is a major traffic hazard and safety issue for us. We've had a number of students with near misses, and had an actual miss about two months ago, where, I mean, an actual hit a couple of months ago, where a student was, was hit there. The problem, I think, is typically that visitors to Loma Linda don't think of a street like being in the middle of a block, and so you start running down through there, and then if you don't catch it, why, students, as soon as the light turns green, they head across and, and can get hit. This is a, has been a complex issue, as many of you know, dealing with how to proceed on this. We have, once again, now, as we have recognized the need to do something, looked at a number of different options, looked at peripheral roads around the edge, looked at the underpass overpass idea, looked at four lanes on grade, and a number of things, and have come back to the recommendation that we believe the separation of grades is probably the only long-term solution to two major issues. One of those is safety, certainly. The other issue is to maintain a major east-west access through the campus. This is the only east-west access we expect to ever have between Redlands Boulevard and Barton Road, and so it's going to have to carry some major traffic. So we'd like to widen it to four lanes. There is room to do that on the north side of the current two-lane street, and go through grade separation as a means of trying to protect the, the safety of our students and faculty that go across there. We have held up landscaping the front side, or the south side of the Centennial Complex in anticipation of doing something here, so we believe the time has come to do that. And so this is what we're coming forward tonight with the recommendation of proceeding with this. If I can go to the next slide, we'll show you a couple of slides of what this would look like. I mean, these are the four lanes. This is what it'd look like on a cross-section, so there would be a Centennial pathway, the major sidewalk we're now working on, would come down, have a slight bulge up over the middle of the widened Stewart Street. The Mission Globe is off to the right, will be in the middle of the campus, and then the pathway would come down and go on eventually into the Centennial Complex on the left side of the picture. Next slide. This is a rendering that it would approximately look like. This is not a tunnel. This is approximately a 50-wide, 50-foot wide overpass for pedestrians across the top of that. Our hope and belief by not only putting this here, but by also bringing better traffic around the sides of the building, that we can direct most of the parking lot traffic from the whole parking lot into the center of the block and on up, so that we decrease significantly the pedestrian traffic on either end of the block, which is now where part of the problems is. The plan also calls for a light on both ends, so that will assist vehicular traffic as well. And the, the plan, as you know, is to have four lanes with two emergency lanes all part of this. The underpass would be sufficient to carry normal freeway clearances, I think it's 14 feet or something like this, so that if necessary, semis and others could go under that and be able to clear the, the bridge without difficulty. Next slide. These seem to us to be the primary priorities that we have been concerned about. Pedestrian safety is certainly the greatest one. As I said, we've looked at everything from putting in a bunch more speed bumps, or doing whatever else. If we just widen the four lanes on grade, we, of course, won't solve the pedestrian safety thing nearly as much as if we have grade separation, so we are concerned about the, the pedestrian safety thing. This building is about probably 50% utilized now compared to what it will eventually be, so the pedestrian traffic is going to increase more and more as we go along. The improved vehicle circulation, this gives us another main east-west access through the campus, which we think will be critical to doing this. the campus, which we think will be critical to doing this. We anticipate having to reopen University Avenue to campus traffic, vehicular traffic while we construct, but then would finally close it permanently to vehicular traffic and be able to use Stewart Street as our campus. And we believe that the plan can be put forward that is aesthetically pleasing and allows us to complete the architectural design on the front side of the Centennial Complex. Next slide. These are some of the issues that we went through last time with the city, and we're prepared to pick up from here and move forward. The city would build the project. We're prepared to commit funds to help assist in that process. We will dedicate some required right-of-way land to enable the widening of the road. The city would maintain and own the street, and Loma Linda would maintain and own the bridge across the top and the liability issues associated with that. That was one of the concerns we had last time around, and we're prepared to, to own that and, and maintain the, the bridge part of it. So that is the proposal, and I would put it before you. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have. I understand we're under a bit of a time deadline with our bankrupt state of California trying to deal with their own issues, and so we're anxious to move forward with this project.
Go ahead. Do you have a question, Dr. Elling?
My first question is, have we have, what's the latest estimate on the costs of the project?
We don't have, the latest estimate we have, well, we were several years ago, which was approximately $6 million at that point in time. We are implementing several strategies to pay for that, for our portion of it. We had a $4 million from the university and $2 million from the city split at that point in time, and we are prepared to endorse and move ahead with that. We are going to be implementing a vehicle registration fee for the university for students and faculty, which will be one of the potential sources of fundings for this, as well as some other funding that we would put into it. I would hope that perhaps with construction costs, what's happened, the price may be less than that, but we don't know that for sure. A major cost, of course, is moving utilities under Stewart Street. That would have to be done.
Couple of questions. First is, there are currently sidewalks on both sides of Stewart Street, and I didn't pick up on the renderings. Those sidewalks would run up to just prior to the overpass, and then they would weave up and around?
Yes. The sidewalks would be there at the center, as you noticed, the, maybe if we can go back, do we have reverse in this thing, go back to the first, yeah, one more back. The sidewalks would still come along, both running east-west alongside Stewart, and then the open part of the, the plan, this would open up into a bowl with graded sides going up, with landscaping and trees in there. So we believe it'd be a very beautiful addition to the campus with the pathway across the middle. The sidewalks themselves would then bowl out on either side and bring up to the grade necessary to, to meet the sidewalk in the middle. And then there's a number of landscaping improvements we'd make on the south side of the Centennial Complex as well to complement that, that pattern. Is that your question, Ron?
Yeah, it is. I'm supportive of the project. I came close to getting hit one time myself, and it was a driver that I, it looked like she was texting, but it was, it was a little closer than was comfortable, and I think--
I saw you, Ron. I wasn't going to hit you.
Ah, okay. The, the chief concern that I have is we're continuing to hear rumblings as recently as just earlier this evening about potential issues of our availability to use the RDA funding if Governor Brown's legislation is approved. So I guess that's going to, it'll become clearer to us shortly. Is that a fair read on what we discussed?
Yes, based on the, our special counsel this Thursday, so we should know something.
So I, I just think it's important to have on the table, there's, there are still some factors that are beyond our control, but to the extent they are within our control, then the project continues to make sense to me, and I would be supportive of it.
I think another concern that I have frankly is the utilities, and I think there may be some pushback from them on this whole thing, and we'll, we'll have to test that as we move forward and see if we can make that work.
If I understand the process correctly, it looks like it's going to be a city project, so at this point, if we decided to move forward, is just a matter of instructing staff to pursue--
Yes.
--drafting of an agreement that would incorporate both of our efforts in trying to move forward with this?
Yes, there's two things that will happen. First, our city attorney will draft an agreement between the city and university. That's number one. The second item is, I will, I will send out a request for proposal to get an engineer on board, because the plan is, is already at 90% complete. We have the plan, we have the specification, we have a cost estimate already, and I need to get an engineer on board to help me with reviewing the package for us to get ready to go out to bid. But before we go out to bid, we need to start talking to the Verizon again. We, we kind of stopped the negotiation two years ago, so we need to get that going again. So that will be my next, next step.
And if, just to make sure everyone's clear, our portion would be $2 million, and as of right now, is basically from RDA funding?
Yes.
Okay.
We have already put, and helped make, Ken, I think it's something like $800,000 or so, $1 million into the design of the project, which we've already put into that.
Just to flesh out the utility issues, if I'm clear, there's a Verizon line that runs across Stewart that would have to be moved or put deeper in the ground, and that could delay the project significantly. What, define significantly? A year? Or do we have any sense?
I, it's probably a year. Again, this is based on Verizon. I, I don't have that schedule. There's, there's Verizon line, there's two water mains, the sewer main, there's a high-voltage electrical line that go across, but, but being, the high voltage line is owned by university, the water main, one owned by the city, one owned by university, those should be pretty easy to relocate, but it's just Verizon because it's the main trunk line.
So in terms of what we would be approving tonight, we would be approving the project conceptually--
Yes.
--contentient upon negotiating with the various utility companies that would have to cooperate with us?
We're not actually agendized for any action tonight.
Okay, it's a workshop.
It's a workshop, yes.
And what I would do is, if I can get some, I think I feel the consensus a little bit, what I would do is, I would start working with the city attorney and, and start sending out the request for proposal to get an engineer on board, and then bring that item back, the agreement back to the council, bring the, award the contract for the construction management back to the council for you to review and approve.
I don't believe we need to make a motion. We'll just direct staff, and let's get moving.
My only comment is, I just, I wish we could have done this earlier. I know that you brought this in front of us, gosh, seems like four years ago. Actually, none, some of us weren't here, but I remember we, I thought you brought it up even before Centennial Complex was completed, even before that.
That's right.
So I almost wish that the city could have spearheaded it on its own, and, rather than the other way, but I'm glad we're, we are where we're at. I think this is a very important project. It's clear to me, I get emails all the time from people who work on campus, that it is a major, major safety issue, and it's unfortunately been neglected for too long, so I think the sooner we get moving on it, the sooner we'll be able to spend the money before the government takes it away.
I'll second Mr. Pesco's comments, that I believe this is probably something that should have been addressed years ago, so the sooner we get going on this, the better, in my opinion.
Thank you. We'll stay tuned.
I think--
I was expecting to hear speeches from the dignitaries you brought with me.
I'm just waiting. I think that adjourns our regular council meeting and RDA. We are, we'll reconvene on April the 12th. Thank you. That was fast. Thank you.